This regular meeting of Navasota City Council is called to order on Monday, the 14th of October in council chambers. That's to record show all council members are present. Welcome and thank you for being here this evening. We ask that you put your cellphones in the silent mode. And a reminder to visitors, if you would, please sign in. And if you wish to speak under visitors' remarks, please fill out the form found in back. State your name and address at the podium as we must document all meeting business and remarks limited to three minutes. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Matt Cecil, first in at the Methodist Church, then followed by the pledges.
Almighty God, today is a day of celebration, a day of joy, a holiday where we remember the past, and we celebrate the people who have come before. And we're a day of celebration where we can look forward to the future. An opportunity to celebrate a spirit of exploration and creativity, a spirit of what might be for our country, but for our city right here in Navasota. Lord, we ask your blessings, as you have blessed us already with creativity. We ask that to continue tonight. We ask that to continue with this city, with the businessmen and women, with our students and our churches, with our leaders here on city council and throughout our community so that we might continue to push forward in a way that is pleasing and acceptable to you. Lord, grant us wisdom in that path. Grant us courage to move forward each and every day, and grant us guidance so that we might do so in a safe way, in a loving way, in a way that honors you each and every day. Lord, we pray all these things as we seek your blessing upon this meeting, as we seek your blessing upon the people who will speak and our city council members, and we pray these things in your holy and wonderful name, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a free, representative, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. I have a couple of proclamations here.
Item three.
I'm sorry?
You want to do remarks of visitors?
Oh, remarks of visitors?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, yes.
We just have the one.
Uh, Ms. Lucy from the Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, council. Jason, good job you got the red memo. So, wanted to sign up and just tell you guys formally, thank you so much. So, if you do not know, we have our last major event for the city of Navasota of the year, which is Blues Fest, which is Saturday, October 19th. You guys are official sponsors for Blues Fest, and Taylor's done a really great job of helping us get that out to the public. She had a really great, uh, quick post this morning that she had to kind of run and do, so we're very thankful for that. But Blues Fest is going to be a big event. We've sold over 100 tickets, ready to go. We've, we've got several more that are, um, being paid for tomorrow, so we've got a good, good, uh, thing going on for Saturday. Um, the next thing I wanted to make sure is on your calendars are two grand reopenings happening on Friday. So, it's a very busy week in the chamber world. So, Friday morning at 9:00 a.m., you have the grand reopening for Walmart. So, if you don't have that on your calendars, please take a minute, make sure you stop by there. Uh, the manager Trey is, um, ready to go. He's super excited about it, and so they were clearing things out today, so trying to get everything ready for that. And that's going to be Friday morning at 9:00 a.m. And then at noon, we have another grand reopening for a very long one, and an oldie but a goodie, a long-term, uh, long-time standing business, which is the Feed Barn located right out, right over here off of Johnson Street. So, the Feed Barn was sold last year, and, um, the new family that owns it have actually worked for and under the Feed Barn umbrella for several years since they were in high school. Um, they are Navasota natives, and so that business has been completely remodeled. They've got new products, new sales guide, new staff, and that grand reopening is Friday at noon. So, we would love to have you guys come out. We'd love to see our city council supporting our businesses here. Um, they're brave enough to take a risk in opening up something in this climate that is a little risky nowadays, and so I know they would appreciate y'all's support as well. So, thank you very much.
Good. Thank you. Don't worry. Yeah. Well, make Lucy come back up here.
Oh, okay.
We have a proclamation recognizing Support Your Local Chamber of Commerce Day. Whereas there are about 4,000 chambers of commerce across the United States, all seeking to spur job creation and promote economic development. Chambers of commerce strive to address the community's top challenges and greatest opportunities through bold leadership and innovative problem solving. They foster stronger, more vibrant communities by advocating for priorities to promote economic prosperity, boost quality of life, and create access to meaningful employment and opportunity for all residents. They're champions of our communities, serving as trusted resource for businesses, residents, and other stakeholders. They create a catalytic community partnership to build resilient economies and promote community-wide prosperity. Whereas the Navasota Grimes County Chamber of Commerce was chartered on March 6th, 1916, by then Secretary of State John G. McKay. It began with nine residents whose names are still familiar in our community today. J.N. Baylor, J.W. Brosick, C.C. Camp, J.T. Evans, H.H. Knox, Ewing Norwood, R.A. Patu, Ward Templeman, and E.H. Tarrell. Whereas the mission of the Navasota Grimes County Chamber of Commerce is to be an association of businesses and individuals organized to encourage a strong local development through an informed membership and community. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Bert Miller, Mayor of the City of Navasota proclaim October 16th, 2024, as Support Your Local Chamber of Commerce Day, and encourage Navasota residents to learn more about the chamber, its impact, and support of local business. Signed this 14th day of October. (Applause). You got too many members to be able to have up here.
We do.
So, y'all are registered.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Kelly.
And now we have the Red Ribbon Week that we're recognizing and proclamation, and I'd like to invite the Navasota Elks to come up and join me. They're participating and promoting this in the community. Proclamation recognizing Red Ribbon Week. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse affect individuals, families, and communities across the nation, it's imperative that visible unified efforts by community members be launched to prevent drug abuse. Red Ribbon Week offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drugs-free lifestyles. Will be celebrated in communities across the nation on October 23rd through 31st. Whereas businesses, government, law enforcement, media, healthcare providers, religious institutions, schools, and other community-based organizations will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing red ribbons and participating in drug prevention activities. Whereas the community of Navasota further commits its resources to ensure the success of Red Ribbon Week. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Bert Miller, Mayor of the City of Navasota, do hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st as Red Ribbon Week, and encourage everyone to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but also throughout the year, making a visible statement they were strongly committed to a drug-free lifestyle. Signed this 14th day of October, 2024.
Get y'all lined up so we can get a photo.
Yeah, y'all get. I think I have a medal.
Might have to do two rows.
Yeah.
I can.
I can stand from her and talk to her.
There we go. One, two.
Stay right there.
Oh, no. We never forget the bear.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank y'all very much. Thank y'all very much.
Did you get your glasses? Mayor and Council, I'm gonna have John McKay come up and give us an update on our CIP project.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This update's pretty easily, easy because as of last week, BPI, our paving contractor on the large CIP project, finished up their work. That project's now kind of in a wrap-up, close-up. We're doing punch list items with them, and really that's the grand total of my updates. It's, it's actually a good one and a quick one this week unless y'all have any questions for me.
That's good news.
Have a good evening, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Update from council members and staff on the TML conference. You wanna?
Yeah, so I'll keep this off. Yeah, so, um...
We just, we just attended last week, the, uh, I don't know the number, 112. 112th Annual Conference and Exhibition for the Texas Municipal League, which is, uh, the, uh, the body that, uh, supports municipalities across the state, and so, yeah.
Yeah, so since I've been here, um, Councilmember Gessner has always asked us, uh, when we go to this event, come back and give a wrap-up. And so, in the past, uh, council members and myself have gave an update, and then, uh, within your weekly update, staff will do an update. So, hopefully we'll get that update from staff, um, to you this Friday. Just kind of want to kind of do some highlights, so hopefully I won't take a lot of thunder from some of you, because I know some of us attended some of the same things. I said, one of the biggest things was the kickoff session. Uh, keynote speaker was Johnny Taylor, the president and CEO of SHRUM, which is the Society for Human Resource Management. Uh, and so gave some really good statistics, kind of, uh, gets you thinking about, uh, over the next decade, and, uh, what is your workforce going to look like? And, um, people over the age of 55 will take roughly half of all new jobs created in the next decade. That's new to, the new generation's work habits is what was explained to us. Uh, part of that was, uh, you know, they did take a, a poll and look at, uh, what during job interviews employers say that, uh, recent college graduates have, uh, some issues that they have. Number one, with 53% was they struggle with eye contact, and that's related to our new technology, cellphones, and, and laptops, and, and iPads. Uh, rounding that off, uh, with 50%, they ask for an unreasonable compensation, so thinking they just come right out of college and want to make what someone that's been working in an organization for several years or decades, um, making. Uh, number three was dressed inappropriately, rounded by number four, which used inappropriate language. Uh, others, now in the technology where we use online interviews, uh, they refuse to turn on their, their cameras generally because they're probably still in their pajamas at home, is what the, uh, Johnny recommended. And then the last thing rounding off number six, at 19%, was they brought a parent to their interview. Uh, so that was kind of, uh, uh, it, it was just crazy. Uh, the biggest jump in the labor force growth is in the coming years will come from those aged 75 and older. So, it's just something to think about. One of the other sessions we talked about, uh, I, uh, attended was, talked about, um, you know, the four steps to resolving conflict and building consensus, where you gather, you know, try to gather what you can agree on, and work on what you can agree on first, and then start working on where you struggle, and if you hit a stalemate, take a break, come back and, and recharge, and try to tackle. And then once you come to an agreement, write down what that agreement is so that both you and the other parties know what that agreement is. Uh, we, we, there was a really good session by the TML Executive Director and Legal Counsel called Tiny Lots, Zombie Subdivisions, and Other Challenges to Local Land Use Authority. Uh, they talked a lot about Senate Bill 2038, which is the, the bill where you can, uh, now property owners in the ETJ can ask to be removed from the ETJ. A lot of that dealt with, um, you know, trying to create municipal utility districts, those type things. Uh, so the Executive Director, or TML just in general thinks that, uh, the legislature's going to expect some changes to that, whether that might be repealed or not, or, um, something related to if there's other things tied to it. So, if we have a development agreement with something out in the ETJ, or some other things that it's not allowed. Uh, the other thing, um, you know, is, uh, a thing that they tried to do at the last legislation session, again, uh, not allowing cities to, um, to have that local control was setting minimum lot sizes, not, not homes with square foot minimum, but your lot sizes. They're looking at trying to, uh, have that minimum at 1,400 square feet. 1,400 square feet with your five-foot setbacks, I mean, you're looking at a 800 square foot home or less, um, on those, so...
31 lots per acre.
Yeah. So, so that is something that, um, that cities are, are not a proponent of. There, there are some, I think they said two, there's two subdivisions in the state of Texas that's already done these. One of them is vacant, totally vacant. There was no appetite for anybody to purchase us, uh, and so it's not doing, uh, doing really well. Uh, one of the other sessions, uh, that we got a lot out of is, was Cultivating Strong Towns. So, uh, if you've attended TML several times, you've heard about, uh, this, uh, this, this philosophy about, um, the best way, uh, to move your city forward is to start thinking about, uh, cost. And, and when subdivisions come in, um, if you talk about you want one-acre lots or two-acre lots, um, the, those lots, how much tax revenue you'll get off of those along with water sales, will they, uh, be sufficient enough to, to pay for the infrastructure for future years? So, a road might last 20 or 30, maybe 40 years, but what happens after that? Are you gonna have enough tax revenue built up to replace that and put a new concrete street in, new infrastructure? And so, uh, what they're recommending is, is, you know, kind of looking at that, looking at the infield and looking at mixed-use developments where you have other, you can get that, um, property value up a little higher, um, and look at balancing those revenues and thinking out on what is the future cost going to be for a, a street or, um, infrastructure underneath. And so, uh, there were some other things. I won't go through my whole list. I've provided you an update. As I said, staff will provide theirs, uh, in the weekly update, but, uh, from my standpoint, that was, uh, I attended a lot more other classes. I, I got over 14 hours of continuing ed toward my 40, 50 hours I'm required annually to get, so, uh, a lot of classes, um, in the last, in a two-and-a-half-day period.
Yeah, just some of the items that I was, attended, a couple that had, um, ideas and ways to engage with council and staff with the community. And the neat thing I heard was a lot of the things that brought, were brought up are things that we're already doing. So, that was, that was really, really good. It just reinforced, um, kind of the answer to how people get their information and, and how they, how you get them engaged, and it's, it's tough. It's tough to do. Uh, Ideas for Downtown Revitalization, that was another one I attended that, uh, brought some, some good ideas that I can maybe share with our Economic Development Corporation in, in regard to incentives and grants and things to, uh, just encourage, um, either sell that building, or, or fix it up, or just ways to, ways that the, the city can, can work with landowners or building owners. And Regional Cooperation was another one I attended that had to do with working together, as we do, with our school, district, council, government, county, um, and ways that we can help each other out. Uh, we, I did confirm that Navasota will, City of Navasota will be hosting a, uh, a small-city clinic in April, so we'll be hosting here in Navasota for cities surrounding us to come, and there's usually about 50 or 60 that attend. In fact, Navasota was the highest-attended one about 10 years ago, and we still hold that record for, for that, so... How long was it? About 10 years ago? Do you remember that? When we did that?
Don't remember it, honestly.
I can't remember it. It's been a while. Uh, but yeah, my, my biggest takeaway was, was what in the heck is the legislature gonna be up to? Because it's probably no good. And, uh, at least towards cities, it has been no good for a number of years with capping of revenue and eroding, continually eroding our local control and our ability to provide services to our citizens. It's, and, uh, uh, you mentioned the, the preemption of our, of our ordinances, although that, that one bill has been declared unconstitutional, but it's probably going to come back in some other form. And then the ET, the extraterritorial jurisdiction, which is the, the mile out from city limits that we have some control over mainly because of the services that we provide. That and annexation, which is pretty much to the point that the legislature's not really allowing cities to, to annex pretty much at all. And so, uh, and then the zoning piece that has to do with controlling our ability to determine lot sizes and things like that. And so, Kenny and I were talking, uh, during the conference, we, we really need to get citizens involved and understand what this, what these laws can do and how they can affect our community. They think they're looking out for the, the citizens, but they're not the ones on the ground. They're not the ones that run into you at the grocery store. We are, and we're the ones that want to hear, we want to hear from you, and we want to hear from the community, and help us. And in fact, if you know, um, legislatures, legislators, um, and we can provide you with the information about when the bills come up, and we, we'd just like some involvement from the community to help us, we're gonna have to fight, we're gonna have a real big fight on our hands on some of these things.
That's right. Your, your state senator is Lois Cole-Core, and your gonna-be-elected state rep is Trey Wharton, and y'all, y'all are voters. We're all voters, but I'm a city official, okay? What keeps those people interested is voters and citizens. So, your voice probably carries more weight than just a city official from Navasota. So, be aware of that, that, you know, what the legislature is doing, like Bert said and, and like Jason said, is eroding the, the authority and, and regulatory ability of, of our, of, not only Navasota, but all over Texas. So, if you, if you, write, write to your legislator, or they've got a website. Let them know.
And it's mainly, it's, one size does not fit all, and that's...
Right.
That tends to be the way they, they think about things. They compare us to Houston. Well, you can't compare us to Houston. I mean, there's just, you can't.
You can't compare us to...
I mean, Houston doesn't even have zoning, okay? So, uh, and reason, zoning is there because the citizens in those communities wanted it. It wouldn't have been put there if it hadn't been done by the citizens. That's where it's driven from, and that's...
The thing that we have in place is what keeps our city unique, and, and it's, it's, thankfully, TML and council are always fighting that in the legislature, and that we, we have that TML resource, they're legal, to be aware of all that, so, you know, maybe there's a way we can get that, those kind of issues put out in the examiner or something like that if it comes up, you know? So that everybody out, outside of this room is, is aware of it and can speak up to their, uh, their legislators.
Well, and there was a lot of us in that session, um, the legislative update session.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, there was barely standing room. Um, I'm gonna guess probably 500 folks were, were in there, and it is, I'm not gonna say frightening, but there, there are things that are gonna come back that are going to adjust how we, uh, can govern, and that is, um, concerning to me, and we, you know, recently had several things that came before council, uh, where citizens were saying, hey, we really need you to do this, uh, and potentially they could take away our ability to even decide what it is that we want to do with our own town. So, uh, I think it's really important, and I kind of starred, uh, the response that says, you know, what can you do to address it? And that is citizen help. And so, um, getting citizens to understand what is going on, I think a lot of times you just assume everything's going well, um, but it's, you know, there are things happening in Austin that, uh, that we don't necessarily keep up with daily. Um, so, anyway, uh, it's very important that you bring that up.
Uh, 8,000 bills a year get written, about 2,500 get to the floor far out of committee. So, yeah. Everybody in here has a day job, so they're certainly not, you divide that up, the math doesn't work out so that you're fully aware of this all the time.
Yeah. That's where TML does a great job of distilling and...
Filtering this mess out.
And letting all the cities know what's important to look at and evaluate. They do a really good job of that.
Never even been bills out there trying to get rid of the Texas Municipal League altogether.
Mm-hmm.
Because they, some of them consider them as a lobby, which they're not.
Correct. Yeah, those bills would say, uh, a city could not join or be a member of or pay any money to an organization like that.
With taxpayer dollars.
With taxpayer dollars, that's right. So, cutting the knees up from under TML, if they don't make any money, they're not gonna be able to pay anybody to do those things, so...
Airport fees.
One of the sessions that I attended was the, uh...
Find a way.
Uh, was the Public Work Department session, and, um, something that, um, the, uh, the lady said, I thought was pretty unique, uh, saying that, uh, in a, in a city, you know, you've got a lot of people that won't come to meetings and won't read newspapers, but they see things going on, things happening, whether you're doing construction, or you're building a new home, or building a new business, was to, uh, put a cue card out in front of it, and they can just walk up and scan that card and take you to a site and tell you exactly what's going on. And, and I thought that was pretty neat that, uh, we, uh, seem like we're going in technology, so, uh, when something happened in a community, if we can just put a cue card out front and say, hey, look, this is what's going on, and said, it's real time, that you can kind of keep up with it, and I'll talk to Jennifer about it, and she thought it was a pretty good idea, too, and, um, I was sitting behind her, she didn't even know I was in there.
I also attended some, uh, Transforming Brownsville, um, which was about new ideas for the city of Brownsville and how to, um, become more connected, connectivity, Wi-Fi. And so they partnered with, uh, a company called Lit and connected, um, all of Brownsville, and what they found is that they, they're able to offer an internet service for $14 a month, uh, to their citizens, so that Comcast and Verizon and T-Mobile, the other ones aren't, are much higher than that, and so they have a lot of, uh, citizens that have bought into this. But it also, they've put in cameras, uh, throughout their trail system and downtown, but attached it to their own Wi-Fi network that they've created, and so now Dispatch has live action of everywhere within their community, um, where on nature trails and hiking and bike trails, if somebody falls out, they, you know, the police department knows about it, uh, if there's any kind of, you know, illegal activity going on, uh, they found out about it. Uh, and that was pretty interesting, uh, to see how they networked with the community and... and found input, um, from what the community needs were, and then they came up with that as an option to, uh, to share with their community. Um, and then to go back to the tiny lots, um, that was a pretty scary, uh, session, but one of the things that they talked about was, um, that these, the lots, that seventy-four percent of people live in incorporated city limits, four percent of those, um, of the surface area is covered by people who live in cities. So, there's not a whole lot of folks that live in cities, uh, is what it, I'm sorry, there is a lot of people that live in cities versus in the county areas, and that it seems as though the state is making it where, uh, if you, that you don't have any real rules in the county, and the rules that we have in the city to keep the city a city, uh, are also being taken away. And so, it's kind of a weird flip-flop that the people in the county are saying, no, that we want rules, so they're moving to the cities, uh, and people that are in the city are saying, no, we don't want rules. So, anyway, it was a, kind of a bizarre flux, I guess, back and forth.
All right. Any reports from council on boards and commissions? Got some things coming up here. Uh, tomorrow is Brazos Valley Gives, Brazos Valley Gives Day, October fifteenth. You can go to brazosvallegives.org, and there are, um, I believe nine different, um, organizations in the county that you can contribute to. Um, and also, we will have a, we will have it open at the Navasota Center from nine to seven, where you can bring cash and check donations. Uh, included in those nine, uh, ones that I'm familiar with, just right offhand, but one of them is the City of Navasota Foundation for Community Projects. And that is, and that is a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), so it, you can write off that donation. And all these donations go through Brazos Valley Gives, but they do not, um, they're not taking away any fees or anything from those donations, so they are gonna be, the full amount that's donated will be given to those organizations. Um, there was an insert in the examiner last week, I imagine most folks saw that as well. So I'd encourage you, if, if you're able to, to support those organizations. Um...
Educational Foundation's in there, too.
Uh, the ISD Education Foundation, I believe the Wolf Sanctuary.
Yep.
Um, Men Making Moves, who do all the bikes every year, um, I think maybe Christian Community Services, hopefully is on there. You know, the Two Rivers Heritage Foundation is on there as well. So, anyway, you go to brazosvallegives.org, and you can look that up. And, uh, they make it really easy. Uh, National Night Out, I'm gonna let Chief Mize tell us about that, being it's tomorrow.
Mayor City Council, uh, yes, tomorrow is National Night Out for Navasota, and as of last week, we had to stop it. We had sixteen different locations sign up. Basically, I gave that list out earlier, we're gonna start at about five-thirty, and it runs till eight o'clock. It pretty much covers the entire city where all these little event groups are at. But either be, uh, the fire department, as well as police department are gonna try, there will be at all the locations, and then the officers have a speech to give to each spot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who'd you tell me?
So I got, so I got, Taylor's gonna come up and give an update. Taylor's got an update for us, too, about an item.
I'm sorry, I'll bring for it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so I'm sure you all saw the announcement today. We are officially being recognized as the sixty-seventh community in Texas to receive the music-friendly designation. I know this is something that the city has been working towards for awhile now, so I'm proud to be here for the close of that. Um, but we will have the official ceremony this weekend at the Chambers Blues Festival, so we really appreciate, um, them for allowing us to share this with the community at Blues Fest. And then you can still purchase tickets to that event on their website. We also held our first meeting with the Navasota Music Advisory Board on October third, and at that meeting Charlie Diggs did provide an update on Texas Birthday Bash. So we have two artists lined up, and you can stay tuned for the official lineup, um, hopefully coming soon. Um, but I believe that's all we have for an update on that. Any questions?
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and also on, uh, there is a lot going on Saturday. Uh, the Pups and Pumpkins will be from ten to noon out at the Dog Park at August Horst. I'm not sure what the dogs and the pumpkins are gonna do. Guess they're gonna have, go play around a little bit.
Just fall activities.
Fall activities.
Okay, fall activities, okay. And then also that same day is the hazardous, household hazardous waste event that is at Twin Oaks in College Station from seven AM to two PM, so you can take your, all areas around, in Grimes County are, are welcome to, uh, take their items there. That would be paint and different things like that that are, that you cannot put in your regular trash. It's at the University Services Building off of Harvey Road. It's really easy to find. I think it's right next to the Veterans, the Veterans, uh...
Veterans Park.
Veterans Park, yeah. So that's from seven AM to two PM, so you can take your items there, um, on Saturday. Uh, of course, there's a little, there's a little festival going on somewhere out there, River Hall, right? Okay, that's on Saturday as well. Uh, coming up a little bit down the road, just a little bit, not too far down the road, uh, Lanterns and Legends, uh, put on by Navasota Theater Alliance, that's the twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh. And this year's theme is Faces in the Windows, which will be families that lived in the southern mansions that you see along Wash, primarily along Washington Avenue. So these stories about those people that owned, that built those homes. And, uh, I hear it's gonna be a, another, another great event. I always look forward to that. Then on the thirty-first is Treats on the Streets, and I think, uh, I think there's still time to sign up for that. If you have a, a business or individual that you wanna set up a table there, Treats on the Streets, that's on Halloween night. That kicks off at six.
Right.
Uh, last week, you hopefully saw, um, in, on our social Facebook page, uh, that we launched a quarterly newsletter. Um, and so if you have not seen that, you make, again, make sure that you, uh, like the City of Navasota's government page, and also you can, uh, they have physical copies here at City Hall, and you can access it also on navasotxt.gov at our, our website. And that's, that'll be quarterly, so they'll take, she's, uh, be working on the next one, which will go out, I guess, in, after the first of the year.
In January.
Down the road just a bit, November second is the Citywide Garage Sale that we have every year, and it's a little bit new this year, it's got an addition to it. You'll be able to set up a booth at the Navasota Center if you don't wanna do your full garage, if you don't wanna sell everything in your garage, just sell a few things. Uh, you can get a ten dollar, uh, uh, booth fee at the Navasota Center. The permit for the garage sale is five dollars. Uh, they'd like to see, get registered by the twenty-fifth, so we can put all of the locations of the garage sales in the examiner in that prior week, so people can have a map to go to. But again, we're add, adding this year, you can, uh, set up a booth or a table at the Navasota Center on that, at that same time, November second. What's the time on that? I don't recall offhand.
For the Citywide Garage Sale?
Yeah.
It's gonna be an all-day event.
Okay. All right. Thing else? Finally, it's workshop and presentation on the proposal and contract agreement with AG/CN Incorporated, project management support for design and construction of the new fire station.
Mayor City Council, uh, so if you remember, a few months ago, we closed on the property on Spur Five-Fifteen, four acres to build a fire station, and then now what's next? So, we've been working with, uh, a company, AG/CN, to come in and help us as project managers, and they have representatives here, uh, to come in and do a presentation and a workshop with you, allow you to ask questions after the presentation or during the presentation. Uh, they're gonna do a presentation on their company and the services that they can provide to assist staff, uh, throughout the, throughout the project. Uh, their firm can assist in all four phases of the project, uh, from programming validation, pre-construction, procurement, or the design phase, construction, and closeout and move-in. Um, so, the total proposed project management support fee, including some optional costs with, uh, project estimations, is three-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand, three forty-one. A team of us, uh, including John McKay, met with them over the last several months, working this out. Legal counsel has reviewed, uh, the documents and has vetted it all, so, uh, Spencer and Kenny are here to do a presentation and answer any questions you may have.
So as they, they come up, I wanna, uh, rehash a couple items. So on this item, um, in the packet, it talks about, uh, so for instance, we go through the pre-construction design phase, and let's say, okay, prices increase, interest rates have increased, it's just no way physically possible for us to go out for debt at this time for the, for this item. Um, we're not on the hook for the three sixty-four. You're only on the hook for the amount of services they provide up through that period. The majority of, uh, the three ninety-six, the four hundred thousand dollars we're talking about is during the construction phase. When you, so when you look at the, the timeline, that's where the bulk of their charges are, are gonna come from. And so I'm gonna turn it over to them and let them tell a little bit about their business and their plan and everything for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks. Uh, thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I think you said it well, you know, we're, we're here to help you guys make informed decisions and kinda guide you through the process. So, uh, during this presentation, we'll talk briefly about AG/CN, who we are, what we do, but then really kinda dig into the, uh, what we call the project roadmap and the, the proposal itself of what is that value that we're bringing to you, and what are you guys getting for that fee, and how are we gonna help you achieve the goal of, of ultimately getting the fire station? Uh, my name is Spencer Clark, I'm the Director of Business Development. I started my career out of Texas A&amp;M with AG/CN as a construction manager, and then transitioned over into business development. Our Chief Operating Officer, Chris Majors, was unfortunately not able to make it, but we've got the, the real man in charge here, Kenny.
Hi. Good evening, and thanks for having us. Kenny Eldridge, I'm Director of Operations for the East Region. I've been in construction thirty-six years, project management with AG/CN for eight years. Uh, my role as Director of Operations is overall responsibility for the projects and the staff in our East Region.
So as we go through this, please feel free to stop us at any time. We want this to be more of a conversation so that you can get your questions out and we can answer them. We prefer it that way, um, so, so please don't hesitate to stop us right in the middle as we're talking. We'd be happy to answer any questions as we go. Um, so again, who we are, we're a Texas-based professional services consulting firm, construction, project management, estimating, value engineer, quality assurance, quality control during construction. So that's the boots in the ground, the eyes and ears for you guys. Uh, we've been in business about twenty-eight years, over seventy-five employees across the state of Texas. Really what we're here to do is work on your behalf to get your project to fruition. Um, we've got registered architects, project management professionals, certified construction management, but the big thing here is our statewide public safety experience. We've worked with municipalities, counties, a lot of government entities across the state, but our public safety experience is something that we really pride ourselves on. That's fire, EMS, and, and police. Um, we've got extensive experience, we know the fire stations, we know, uh, how to get them, you know, constructed, how to do them right, and how to maximize those dollars and time for the owners. So that's something we really pride ourselves on is, is our statewide public safety experience. We tailor our approach to your needs, so we're gonna, we have a playbook that we can kind of execute, our roadmap, our things that we do, but really, we want that to be specifically designed for the Navasota Fire Department. We want it to be designed for the city of Navasota. We want it to be designed for the, the end users. What is, what is that ultimate goal? And the way we do that is becoming your trusted partner and advisor. We don't have a vested interest in, in making the, the most beautiful station in the world. Yes, we do want it to look nice, but at the end of the day, we want it to be functional. We want it to cost, be cost-efficient for you guys. Um, the acronym we have here is a little bit silly, CARE, Collaboration, Anticipation, Representation, and Engagement, but it really is true. We're collaborating with the, the architect, engineer, the, the city staff, the contractors, we're, we're integrating with them so that we can have that collaboration to make a successful project. Anticipation, we wanna come with solutions, we wanna be able to look ahead, you know, get back, get on the balcony and be able to see those problems and mitigate them before they become giant costly issues, and you've got a contractor coming in here, you know, putting a change order in front of council that has to be approved. We wanna mitigate those early and often. Representation, again, kinda going back to the playbook, your goals are our goals. We wanna develop a thorough understanding of what it is that you guys need, and make sure that we're hitting that, and it's getting delivered within that project. Uh, and then engagement, that's, that's again, us, just the boots on the ground. We're always gonna keep you guys informed. We wanna make sure that you guys are making informed decisions, right? We're gonna say the good, the bad, and the ugly, but at the end of the day, transparency is key in this. And so that's kind of where we get that collaboration, anticipation, representation, engagement on what we're gonna do on behalf of, of, of you and the end users for the fire We'll talk a little bit more about, you know, all the stuff that'll go into this throughout the project roadmap and the, and the proposal itself, but the schedule management, uh, quality assurance, the budget management, I know those are, these are big items, and we'll talk a little bit more about it as we go through this project roadmap. And I'll let Kenny kinda take over here. We're gonna go through the project roadmap from a high level, but it really ties into the proposal itself and what we are gonna be getting for our services.
Yeah, and the roadmap really is a good, good playbook, like the last slide said, cause it goes through the steps of cradle to grave, basically. The programming starts with the specific needs and requirements for this Navasota fire station. Thank you. Uh, main, main items here, we're gonna start with providing a conceptual budget. We're gonna put together a document that lays out all the specifics that we're looking for here, square footages, layout of the building on the land, making sure turning radiuses work, basically developing the master program schedule and a conceptual budget that becomes the playbook for the rest of the phases. The next phase is, we have a document, now we give it, uh, to the architect. We go in, we help select the architect, uh, put together the RFQ, and negotiate, negotiate the fees with, uh, the city and the architects. Architects onboard, we start design. The, the playbook there comes in, comes into, uh, effect again because we're gonna take that, the architect's gonna use that as the basis for establishing the design. We're gonna once again validate the design schedule with our master program schedule, and also then do budget estimates along the way, which was mentioned earlier. Uh, we get the design done, and we're looking for a contractor. So once again, we go through the process, advertising for the contractor, assisting with the bid analysis, and reviewing the proposed contract with the contractor, so we can get, get rolling with construction. Construction, of course, main things there, we're gonna establish the schedule again, validate the schedule and the budget once again. Uh, main things... Main things, this is where, like it was said, more of the costs come into play from our side because that's when we have boots on the ground and we're spending more time on the quality management, the schedule management, the change management, making sure the contractor's conforming with the plans and specs. And once we get to completion, the warranty phase, just making sure any items that come up after construction are addressed efficiently and...
Yeah, one thing is, you know, we're guiding and recommending throughout this process. Navasota is gonna be making all the decisions. We're gonna be helping you make those informed decisions, but we're not making any of those decisions. We want you guys to have ultimate ownership of this project. The end users have ultimate ownership of this project. And then with the warranty phase, you know, get your O and M manuals, get you moved in, but we're not going anywhere, right? We're always, we're always gonna be a phone call away to be able to come in and help out when everything, you know, anything goes awry or anything. Hopefully, we've had a really seamless project.
But everything can go through.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
So, when a contractor mobilizes, do y'all have somebody at the site during the deal?
Yes.
During the construction phase?
Yes.
Okay. You're the company man.
What's that?
You got the contractor and the company man, essentially, so you're the company man.
Sure, the contractor is still gonna have their superintendent.
I got that.
Right. But we're gonna be, we're gonna be just kind of, again, that collaboration and engagement, they still have their job to do, they've got their plans and specs and their contract. We're just gonna be overseeing that on behalf of the city of Navasota.
And that could be a shared responsibility between staff and their people as well. Again, it's what we want and what we wanna use and the services that we wanna use from them.
You've got a fire department to run and he's got a project to run, so...
And similar...
I get that.
Similar thing is, on our public works side, we have a graduate engineer, which, a little bit different, but then we also have a project person that comes, that goes out, but that person is stretched too, 'cause those are for private developments that are going out. They have to make sure, manage and make sure that the roadways are being done correctly, subdivisions being put in correctly. And that project manager, they deal with road and street utilities on an ongoing basis. No one, no staff member has built a fire station. So, we need someone that has built a fire station, and so that's kinda why Fire Chief went in and said, "This is who we would like to prefer to oversee this project." 'Cause unfortunately, not many people in this room will ever see another fire station in Navasota built, so we need to make sure it's done right, and so that's, that is what their expertise is.
We're really just an extension of your staff, right?
I got that, yeah.
Was there anything in the proposal or the, kinda the preliminary schedule that we have? And again, a lot of this is gonna get validated when we truly go through the programming side of things.
I'm sorry, just for the sake of asking, just because I don't know, what you're selling sounds good, but I haven't heard from anybody else that sells fire stations or this process. So, we're totally relying on Jason's recommendation. Have you used them before? Have you been a part of using them at other departments? They had Montgomery County down as places that they worked before, so...
Yeah, I have not. It's just talking to them, talking to other clients that they've had in the past. I haven't visited with ESD III, but I've visited with other, I think they did some work, they didn't have it listed there, but with the city of Conroe, they've done some work for the city of Bryan, and when they were doing that work, I was close with the chief there, and also in San Marcos, too. So, those are some of the other cities and fire stations that they have worked on, and I was impressed with the work that they have performed.
Sorry to interrupt your presentation for that question, but...
Oh, please, that's exactly what we want. We want all the questions.
And also, counsel, legal counsel has reviewed the contract, made several comments and got that back. We're not asking tonight for approval, that'll come at the next meeting, but tonight is to get your feedback, if there's any concerns or anything, to get that before we can bring this back as an action item. But I wanna let you know that legal counsel has reviewed it and all changes or any recommendations have been done and accepted, understanding each other.
We've got a couple little tweaks with respect to just some of the changes I made. Basically, had them guaranteeing that they will ensure that the project was gonna be built in accordance with the plans and specs. That's really up to the contractor. They're gonna be overseeing, they're gonna use commercially reasonable efforts to ensure that that's the case, which I think is a pretty industry standard. So, all the other changes that were requested, they made and they've been very amenable to the changes that are requested. So, I think the contract is in good shape with those tweaks.
I don't think you're finished with your presentation, right? You've got more to go?
Well, I mean, I've got a couple slides, but they're really not that crazy important other than, I mean, we really wanted to make sure that you guys fully understood, you know, what it was that we're providing and the value that we're bringing to you guys. If you had any questions behind that, that's what we wanted to get those questions answered on.
Y'all did 54 stations in San Antonio?
Yes, sir. We actually just got contracted to do facility condition assessments on 50 more. We've done, now, we weren't full program management like we were here. That was mainly just inspections, assisting the city of San Antonio in some capacity or another over the last 20 years on those. I believe to date, I don't, the number's well over 100 different fire stations across the state of Texas that we've been in some sort of management capacity on.
So, what other functions do you build? Do you have fire, police stations or...
Yes, sir. I mean, it's police stations, education facilities, working with municipal governments to do city halls, public works buildings, pretty much any government entity we work with to augment their staff for those, for vertical and horizontal projects as well. A lot of work with Fort Bend County, we're working with Montgomery County right now. I mean, there's just a lot of, and we're in all the major cities across the state. We're doing several big emergency services districts, fire stations in Reeves County out in West Texas right now. My passion was kinda, one of the first projects that I got brought onto was an ESD in Harris County. It was EMS, but that was kinda my first, cutting my teeth in the construction world was working on an EMS facility, and so that's kind of where I got my passion to work on those projects. But I would say, Mr. Weeks, it's all of kinda the government entities. I mean, it's ISD, higher education, a lot of work with Texas A&amp;M Systems, UT Systems, all across the state on their satellite campuses.
And then also with your connections, I'm assuming when we go through the bidding process, you have a lot of connection to send those construction bids out to not just this area, but statewide?
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's one of the big things is, you know, the more people that we can get, the more companies that we can get to bid your project, the more competition and the better price that we're gonna get, whether that be from Houston or College Station or wherever it may be. We wanna make sure that you guys are getting the best value in both your architect and engineer and also in your contractor as well. And so, using our network, instead of just doing a, you know, putting it out in the local paper per Texas Government Code or whatever it may be, we're gonna fulfill that legal requirement for advertisement, but we're also gonna reach out to our network to garner additional interest and support for y'all's project as well.
You'd know who the good performers are.
We will, we do. We have those opinions, but we, again, we want y'all to make informed decisions, right?
I got it, but, you know, we wanna competitive in architecture and construction.
Absolutely.
Competition there.
Absolutely.
But at the same time, you know, we don't want somebody that, you know, is gonna push this thing out six months, eight months, a year over schedule either.
Competitive and the ability to perform.
Yeah.
Well, and just like, you know, entrusting in our expertise in the fire and EMS design and construction, we're gonna go in and listen to those responses from those individuals that focus on fire and EMS construction as well, yes, sir.
On the day of the operations, will you have an office on site or will you have just a man just come and look over things and leave, or will he stay there while they're working, or...
Well, we, they won't be full-time on site, so we won't need a trailer, but they will be visiting the site. As construction ramps up, they will be visiting more and more often, so it'll fluctuate. But the goal is to monitor the construction, you know, as needed, basically.
No strangers...
As needed based on the activity.
No strangers to officeing out of the truck as well, you know, being on site. That's what our project managers do, you know, day in and day out.
What is your function, if any, in the financing?
On the financing side of actually getting the money for the station? So, I think the, our function there is really just making sure that you guys know what your budget is, right? And, you know, getting the scope that is necessary for the station that the city of Navasota needs and that the community needs, but then ultimately, you know, making sure that we know exactly what that dollar value is, using our cost estimating, who is some of the best in this, that I've seen of hitting the numbers within, you know, a 1% margin of where the actual numbers are coming in, even with escalation and inflation and all those things. I think that's really what we bring on the financing side is, you know, I can, I can talk to you about some, you know, capital folks that we've worked with on other stations, but at the end of the day, I mean, I think that's just a thing for you guys. But it's, for us, it's making sure that you guys are making the informed decision of how much is this station going to cost us and making sure we're getting as close to that number as possible.
And we'll work with, you know, three of the granting administrators that we work with, that we get the most solicitations from, Grant Works, Public Management, Taylor Associates. We'll work with those to see if there are any grants that are available out there that they're aware of, as well as reach out to them if they're aware of any type of other funding sources. But as I mentioned before, this isn't something we can fully fund out of cash. This is a debt issuance that we're looking at 20 to 30. I know that we talked about USDA, USDA goes a little bit further, so that might be another item that we might wanna look at if we wanna go even further than 30 years. So, but we are gonna have to issue debt for this. It is gonna be from property taxes to be able to pay for it. Luckily, in the last several years since I've been here, we've been able to lower the tax rate significantly, so, you know, I've been telling you that it's coming, and in order for to get this to get off fruition, we will do all of the funding pieces that we can, but there is gonna be an issuance need for the debt.
And Jason, to your point earlier, you know, the way that we've set our proposal up is that we can kind of go in kind of steps and stop, right? And pull back until we understand where the funding is coming from and then we can come back in. And so, you know, kind of like a à la carte, so to speak, we're gonna come in, do the work, and then if we need to hit the pause button and step back, we can do that, you know, no problem.
So, will you have a dedicated project manager?
That, well, it might be different in the architect phase than the construction phase. Understand that. But that I'll report to you?
Correct.
Right. Once that gets to a construction phase, and there'll be a project manager that the contractor is gonna, he'll have to interface with, correct?
And that's mainly the same person that will be on the site?
Oh, yeah, okay, that's what I was...
Because they're the most in tune with what's going on, you know, construction-wise and budget.
3200 Wilcrest. Actually, less than that, 'cause that lands three minutes from here.
Yeah.
I just, we just don't wanna get passed around inside the business. This project manager started, okay, well, okay. Boring if he left the company, I could understand that, but doesn't get moved around so that there's some continuity there throughout the project.
Absolutely.
Well, I will say that during the design phase, you kinda hit it, there will be some different people there. The continuity is me.
Gotcha.
And we do try to engage the person that will be the boots on the ground.
Yep.
At some point during the, actually along the way during the design, so that they're familiar with the project and the history when it comes to day one of construction.
I got it. When you go back reviewing drawings, you're gonna have other guys.
Right. And we are looking at construction in a year and a half, so it's hard to say who exactly is gonna be on it right now, but that is the goal, the continuity.
Name and phone number, please.
He's always waiting, he should be here any minute.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you. I was about to ask a question.
I just wanna put it out there, this is gonna be a Navasota fire station. It's not gonna be a College Station fire station. It's not gonna be a Bryan College Station. And I wanna make sure that it fits our community and that it fits the needs of our department.
That's where we start.
And I know, you know, you use resources from other things and I get that, but I just don't want ever to forget that it's ours.
Yes, sir. And I think that's the most important part in the very first step of programming, right? It's...
Everything from the look of it?
Absolutely.
Being some ultra-modern looking thing that College Station has? No, no, no. We don't want that.
You want something efficient, that you can afford and be proud of.
But we're talking about putting a bronze statue of Jason Kakasi out there in front of it. Really?
Well, we'll be covering the cost of that.
So, you know...
I wouldn't know which answer.
So, the current one at College Station is what I understand is Mitch, so...
Mitch was the model.
Yeah, Mitch was the model for that.
Mitch was the model.
We are not loathe to use good ideas from any place.
And Mayor and Counsel, I wanna go ahead and speak up, in our meetings that Jason and I have had with these folks, these are the same things they've been telling us this whole time, and exactly what y'all are bringing up is why we were both excited to have them on the team. We've had those discussions, and one of the big things that they have in this is some of that control over an architect, over that contractor, some of those things, you know, neither Jason or I understand just how much that pillar costs with this design versus something else, and they've really got that expertise of, hmm, you might be getting hoodwinked here, and they kinda give us that control mechanism and that expertise of living and breathing this every day. And so, we're really excited about that for this process, exactly like you were saying, Mayor, it's Navasota's fire station. We don't need someone who's gonna come in here and cookie cutter in College Stations and see if they can fit it on our site, and oops, it just happens to be more expensive 'cause of architectural. And these guys understood that very clearly in every meeting we had, what we were looking for and those kinda needs.
Architects can get out there.
Oh, yeah.
I lived with one for four years, three years up there.
And these guys...
He's a whacko.
These guys are good at keeping them under control. So, they talk that talk and we've talked to other people who say they walk that walk as well.
At what point in the phase here would we know the dollar cost of this new fire station?
The final cost?
Before we get started, what cost will we be looking at with the, to build this building?
We'll have a pretty good idea, like in the conceptual budgeting estimate of like understanding the programming.
Right, that's what I was gonna say. Basically, once we get the program and get all of the needs of the department and the city, and put it together in a document and start laying out the budget and the schedule, that's when we should have that conceptual estimate.
I mean, we know how many bays, what square footage, is it gonna be one-story, two-story? If it's two-story, we gotta have an elevator. Is it gonna have a conference room, community room, is it gonna have an EOC? How many living quarters? How many, all of that comes into play. They go through a checklist to make sure they've accomplished everything.
And that's pre-designed, right?
Yes.
Programming, that's day one, right?
And then they'll put it in there and have a, 'cause you know about square footage and how much certain things are already, and so they'll have that number. So, we should have some estimate of it. You won't know the true cost until it's bid out, but you'll have some idea of what that bid should be.
idea of what that bid should come in prior to that.
It would be an engineer estimate, right, basically, or?
But then we also do kind of like a gated design deliverables, and we run cost estimates. As, as they're doing the design, we're gonna be getting those estimates as we're getting to the next step of the design and the next step of the design, so that we can truly understand, okay, hey, here, how, how are we working on our, our original conceptual budget estimate? And then once we get design completed and we actually go to bid documents, like Kenny said, okay, now we've got a pretty good idea of, you know, a 95% construction documents, where our number is. Our number should line up real dang close with where our contractor number is.
And, and we'll have those conversations once we get it. So for us, this, just for sake, let's say it, uh, we, we want seven bays, and seven bay is gonna cost $10 million. And it's a million and a half per bay, and you come to us and say, hey, you need to shave off 3 million. So we go, we go back and we discuss, okay, can we, are we good with five bays? So that's a way to cut cost, is, well, it's cut two bays out, now we save $3 million. So those are type scenarios. Once they get the design and everything, um, looked at and put the numbers together, we'll have those discussions to, to try to, to balance that out. And where, where do you feel comfortable with the price? And what does that mean financially?
But what you'll run models on?
We'll run models on that. At this rate, here's how much it's gonna cost, uh, over 20 years, here's what it's gonna cost if we program any grants in. I mean, we'll run all those numbers for you.
We'll need to talk about, you know, 10 years down the road, how much equipment will we have, and 20 years from now, how much are we gonna have, things like that.
But one of the things that...
You know, we wanna program and talk about too, is, you know, talking about the future. At some point, are we gonna end up bringing EMS in-house? You know, maybe, maybe not, but you don't wanna cut yourself short and not have that room for, for that, uh, service.
Yeah, so it's something you have to think about is the future too. I mean, you're not, as I said, you're not gonna build another fire station probably here in Navasota unless it totally explodes. Uh, you might build something over on the west side, but I'm saying, but generally, a, a station of, your central fire station, you're not gonna build another one. And so if that's the case, you wanna make sure that it has that growth potential if you need to put an EMS in there and we decide we have to bring EMS in-house, or whether we house EMS, uh, for another agency.
Um, I'm planning this as a 50-year building, so.
All right, Council, if you don't have any other questions, you be sure to email me over the next week, and we'll have this contract on the next, um, agreement on the next meeting, so we can start moving forward with that timeline.
Absolutely.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
from Easy Signs, or EZ Signs Incorporated for Citywide Wayfinding Project Phase 1.
Mayor and Mayor's Council, if you will remember, back in March, uh, we brought to you, uh, the wayfinding signage. Uh, we brought, uh, to you a couple of options that TechStar had finally approved. We needed your agreement on those. Uh, within the packet, you'll, um, there's a photo of actually the, uh, design, uh, that the Council approved in addition to your packet, are the locations for those, uh, wayfinding signs. So, uh, this item is not changing the design look of the, of the, uh, signs nor the locations. The reason you're bringing brought this item, uh, number one is because it's over $50,000, uh, but the other reason is, is because if you'll remember, as I mentioned in a previous meeting, um, the current, uh, agreement with National Signs LLC, um, that we were working with, they have now claimed bankruptcy, and so they're no longer able to service, um, our needs for these signs. And so we reached out, uh, to EZ Signs, and EZ Signs is also still part of Choice Partners Co-op, which is, uh, is a cooperative purchasing agreement through the state, uh, and so they've already bid out these projects, uh, for these signs. Uh, originally, uh, the, the remaining signs were gonna cost about $80,000, which were gonna be funded through our, our hotel motel, uh, taxes, uh, to finish out Phase 1 of the project. Uh, the, the total amount that we're asking for tonight is that quote, that EZ Signs are providing us for those signs at $64,125.
It's a total of 15 signs?
I think that, yes, sir. Again, the only thing that's changed from the last time we met is the name of the company, and the price is less.
Looks like they got shorter, too.
No.
What's, what's our status vis-à-vis national, financially? Are we even with them, or?
So, no, sir. Uh, so our legal counsel is working on that, um, uh, now. Uh, I know that Luke, Luke has been working with Kristen on getting all the documentation, 'cause, you know, a- as someone files bankruptcy, there's, um, that, we, we have paid them some money that we did not receive, um, some products, services, and so we do have to file the necessary paperwork.
And, and we did that last week. We filed the, the claim with the bankruptcy court, so that's in motion, uh, by now, thanks, number, May for Tim.
I move to re-approve Quote 3923 for directional signs from EZ Signs Inc. for Citywide Wayfinding.
I see it.
Motion, second by Mr. Stevens. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item 7, consideration and possible action to approve Resolution 773-24 awarding grant administration services for fiscal year 25, 26, Texas Community Development Block Grant Program funded and administered by Texas Department of Agriculture.
Hello, Mayor and Council.
Hello.
Um, if you'll remember, back in August, we came, um, before you to authorize, for authorization to issue an RFP, and so today I come asking for consideration or possible action to approve the resolution which will award grant administrative services, um, for the CDBG grant. Um, this grant will help or provide funding for water, wastewater, drainage, roadway, and, but, um, bridge projects. Um, and because the federal grants require an extensive amount of paperwork and specific document, uh, documentation requirements, most cities find that it's beneficial that they hire firms with more knowledge and experience, um, to help staff, uh, ensure funding, um, from the, the federal grant. Um, so today we res- or we previously received two proposals from Grant Works and Public Management, and based on experience, work performance, um, capacity to perform, and cost, our review committee selected Grant Works to be awarded.
We've been happy with the work Dave's done for us.
Most certainly.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Resolution 773-24.
Second. Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by Mr. Fultz to approve Resolution 773-24 with the administration of the grant by TDA and through, through Grant Works. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item 8, consideration and possible action on quarterly investment reports for third quarter through fourth quarter, April through September 2024, of fiscal year 23, 24, as well as annual investment summary FY 2024.
So again, um, I'm just gonna give you a brief summary, um, for 20 fiscal year 2024. We've earned about $568,000 from investment income, um, which is nearly a 17% increase from the prior year. Um, we have two CDs that have matured, uh, and then, in fiscal year, we're projecting to have, or mature dates for 1 million. That's about two CDs and two bonds. Um, and then staff would recommend moving the funds to one of the investment pools, preferably Texas Class or Texas Pool.
I thought we had moved out of the CDs.
So we had, I think...
They were waiting for them to mature.
We had, we had a lot of CDs, so, uh, prior to me coming, uh, the previous finance director purchased, I think, nearly 15 or 20 CDs. And so, um, the, as you see, the rates there are significantly low.
Yeah.
And so, uh, as those come to maturity, we are, uh, moving those into the pools, 'cause the pools are earning a, a lot more.
Yeah, and that, that one, the Texas Pool, I think, is a new one that wasn't there before anyway.
Texas Class is the new one.
Oh, okay.
Texas Class is our new one.
Okay. So we have, you know, new good options.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, we have new good options.
The numbers are bigger.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, uh, approve the quarterly investment reports for the third quarter through the fourth quarter of April to September 2024, of fiscal year 2023, 24, as well as the annual investment summary for fiscal year 2024.
I see it.
Who's that?
Me.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by Mr. Stevens to approve quarterly investment reports and investment summary. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries.
Get that money transferred.
Yeah, before they change their mind. Item 9, consideration and possible action on Resolution 774-24, designating persons authorized to sign checks and authorizing designated persons to access bank accounts for certain purposes.
Mayor and Members, Council, I know that this has Heaven's name beside it, but your next four items, uh, as you, uh, have been told, uh, so Heaven is now the finance director, so, um, uh, with that, we needed to, um, remove the previous, uh, chief financial officer, uh, from the, the records, uh, for all of our accounts, a- as well as, uh, the request is to include on a couple of others, adding, uh, Kristen Gautier, our assistant city manager, to the accounts. So this item here is related to, uh, Citizen State Bank, uh, so, uh, currently right now, uh, is listed on there. We even still have, uh, the former mayor, Pro Tim Grant Holt is on there, so the, the request is to remove him, and remove the previous CFO, and then adding, um, our, our new finance director, as well as adding our assistant city manager to those account, to that account.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 774-24.
Second. Motion by Mr. Fultz, second by Mr. Gessner to approve Resolution 774-24. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item 10, consideration and possible action on designated persons authorized represent- as authorized representatives for the city of Navasota accounts with Texas Class to open accounts, deposit and withdraw funds, agree to terms for use of the website for online transactions, to designate other authorized representatives, and to take other, all other action required or permitted by the city of Navasota.
Mayor and Council, this is related to Texas Class. It's one of our public funds investment pool. And so, again, there's some changes, removing, uh, the, uh, previous CFO, as well as removing, um, the economic development, uh, a former economic development director that was on that account. So these are things that the previous CFO, uh, did not remove, uh, while those, uh, employees, uh, left the organization. So this is kind of, um, cleaning up that, is adding, um, um, myself, uh, our assistant city manager, our finance director, as well as, um, our C-Secretary, uh, to those, um, uh, Texas Class account.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Designated Jason Weeks, Kristen Gautier Haven, I'm sorry, Heaven Dominguez and Susie Homeyer as authorized representatives for the city of Navasota accounts with Texas Class.
Second. Motion by Mr. Fultz, second by Mr. Stevens to, um, approve Designated Mr. Weeks, Ms. Gautier, Ms. Dominguez, and Ms. Homeyer as authorized representatives for the city of Navasota accounts with Texas Class. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item 12, consideration and possible action on TechStar, Resolution 77...
Item number 11.
Hold on, is it 11?
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
Okay.
You got where you put the numbers on here now, I should be able to see it. Consideration and possible action on Texas Pool, Resolution 775-24, amending authorized representatives and designated the persons as authorized representatives for the city of Navasota accounts with Texas Pool, public investment pool, to open accounts, deposit and withdraw funds, agree to the terms for use of the website for online transactions, designate other authorized representatives, and take all other action required or permitted by the city of Navasota.
Mayor and Council, uh, exactly similar to the previous item, um, this is to remove, um, uh, the former economic development director and former, um, CFO, and, um, add, um, uh, Heaven Dominguez as the, uh, primary authorized user, uh, and having myself, uh, the C-Secretary, and the assistant city manager, uh, on the Texas Pool, um, account.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Texas Pool Resolution 775-24.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fultz, second by Mr. Stevens to approve Resolution 775-24, Ms. Dominguez, Mr. Weeks, Ms. Homeyer, and Ms. Gautier as authorized representatives of Texas Pool. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Now 12. Consideration and possible action on TechStar. Something tells me it's gonna be very similar to the one before that. TechStar Resolution 776-24, amending authorized representatives and designated the persons as authorized representatives for the city of Navasota accounts with TechStar, public funds investment pool, to open accounts, deposit and withdraw funds, agree to the terms of use for the website for online transactions, and designate other authorized representatives to take all other action required or permitted by the city of Navasota.
Mayor and Council, this is just a repeat from the, uh, previous one, but it's with our, uh, TechStar company.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve TechStar Resolution 776-24.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fultz, second by Mr. Stevens to approve TechStar Resolution 776-24. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Just about made it. Item 13 is the consent agenda, which are the minutes for September, municipal court report for September, and financials for September 2024.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes, the municipal court report, and the financials for September 2024.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by Mr. Fultz to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. And with that being the final item, we are adjourned.